To ask Minister Lynn McReiny from Coville United Methodist Church to come up and greet us with a prayer.
Would you bow with? Heavenly Father, we who have been called today to assemble in order that needs might be addressed and business conducted, express thanks and thanksgiving to you for this another day of life and opportunity. May we ever be mindful that each day is a gift and may we invest ourselves wholly in it, conducting our affairs with integrity, honor, and faithfulness. Granted these our leaders of this community strength and conviction, wisdom and guidance so that when opportunities occur, our challenges arise, that they will know how to conduct their business with a sense of civic responsibility and personal honor. Grant to them a sense of responsibility, keeping in mind the common values of life and living we all hold in common, so that they might exert their efforts and conduct their business in a way that builds a better future for us all. Granted these leaders as well as all of us, ears to hear beyond the words being spoken, to the problems or possibilities which are being vocalized. Let us have eyes to see beyond the person standing before us, to the opportunity, plea, or problem which they represent. Let us have hands that are ready to help, minds always open to the possibility that whatever person, problem, plea, or opportunity that presents itself during this business meeting, might be part and partial to you and your plan for us and our positions of leadership. May those who lead and we who submit to their leadership, be always willing to do that which is right, giving ourselves a service to each other, our community, our state, our nation, and our God. We pray our prayer in Christ's name, amen and amen.
All right, Councilman Deming, could you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Deming. Thank you, Minister McReiny. I need a motion, I need a motion on, what are we going on? Oh, I need a motion to suspend the rules. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Ms. Newman. Questions, all in favor? All in favor, suspending the rules? Oh, she got to read them.
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5J, the exhibit A only, which concerns the resolution for rental agreement with South Mississippi Business Machines for the Police Department. And to our routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $1,956,967.60.
I need a motion on it. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Ms. Newman. Any questions? Calling for the question, all in favor? That's four, whatever we got, 5-1, Dr. Tisdale, dissent. Presentation agenda, Mayor's report.
Yeah, Councilman, I do welcome everyone here. We've got a sellout crowd tonight. And I'm going to pass the microphone over to a couple of people to proceed, but something just happened today and Mike is going to give you a little update about what had been accomplished by our chief of police.
There is a TV show, America's Got Talent. I just want to tell you that Biloxi's got talent. We really have talent. Chief John Miller, our own Chief John Miller, was elected today as the president of the Regional Organized Crime Information Center, which represents 1,400 law enforcement agencies. That's pretty cool.
That is way cool and of course, the chief and his old crew and the fire department and everybody within the city has done an outstanding job this year and this week especially about what's coming up and I think so far, so good. And thank you to everyone for, tomorrow we're going to have, I think, a great gathering and look for several more days of fun. I would also ask Bill Raymond to come in to introduce Kay Miller, who will introduce and present some awards. So, Bill?
As outgoing president of Main Street, it's my job and my honor to present our annual Main Street Awards. We have a few recipients tonight and our first one is for our Downtown Business of 2018. This business has been downtown a number of years in a location that was very successful, but this owner decided to bite the bullet and to do a major expansion and moved into the old library. And soon we'll be doing another expansion when she opens her first floor. So, our Downtown Business of the Year is Le Cafe Benier. Sita? And what we do at Main Street couldn't happen without a lot of volunteers and without a commitment from a lot of people. And we have one person we want to recognize this year because he's got the fire in his soul for downtown, lives down here, spends all of his time down here and if he could, he works in Ocean Springs, but I'm sure he's looking to move that to Biloxi too. But we'd like to recognize our outstanding volunteer for the fire in his soul, to Cory Christie.
Cory leads a hell of a group too, I don't mind telling you. We appreciate your music.
We also present an award every year for design downtown and for commitment to making downtown better by investing in a downtown property. This year's award goes to Machado Patana for buying and restoring the McKiston Hall Building. Unfortunately, they couldn't be with us tonight, but we wanted to recognize them anyway and really appreciate the investment they have made in downtown. I've got one I've been hiding. For the, I've worked for the city for 20 odd years, 25 odd years, something like that. And for 25 years, we have talked about Howard Avenue and returning the traffic, its original traffic pattern back. Everybody's talked about it, everybody's wanted to do it, but nobody did it. Well, it did happen this year and it's underway now and it'll be complete pretty soon. And for the vision that it took to make this happen and for his commitment to downtown, we're going to present the Downtown Visionary Award to Mayor Fofo Gillich.
Okay, we have one last award and Bill is our outgoing president and so we would like to present this award to Bill Raymond for his outstanding leadership and guidance this past year and really helping us get a lot of things accomplished. What a lot of people are going to see that Bill has helped us do is we are about to add some lights, some string lights to Rue Magnolia. So be on the lookout and hopefully that's going to, they're in and the poles are here so they're going to go up very quickly. So, thank you, Bill, for everything this year and helping us make things happen downtown. And we would like to introduce our incoming president, Pat Wiley. Pat Wiley, come up for a second. And we'd just like to introduce Pat Wiley. He is going to be our president this year and so we're really excited about everything that's going to happen with Main Street this year.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Kay. I have one, I may ask Jonathan Zubo come up and give us a little update on our marathon that we've had a few good years and we're hoping another, three, four? Yeah, good deal. Well, Mike's yours.
To pile on to the accolades of the Police Department and Fire, I work with nine different municipalities each year in the southern region and the Biloxi PD is second to none. We've been really, really happy with them, so that's awesome to hear. It is our third year of the Mississippi Gulf Coast Marathon. We were happy to start in 2016. Last year, for any of y'all keeping up with the marathon, we did have a little bit of a hiccup with the course distance, but as they say, there's no such thing as bad publicity. Numbers are up a whole lot this year. We were covered in the national spotlight and we wish that coverage would have been a little more positive, but the numbers and everything have responded. We're up about 10% this year. We already have 37 states from the country represented coming down right now. We're expecting close to 4,000 runners to come. It's the second weekend in December, 7th, 8th, and 9th. Everything primarily takes place at MGM Park and Biloxi Shucker Stadium on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. 5K and a kids' race at Point Cadet Plaza on Saturday. Sunday has a half marathon and a full marathon that is point to point, all the way down Highway 90, finishing in the stadium. So, we're really, really excited about this year. There's actually been a lot more local businesses stepping up and participating with us, which is allowing us to market more and spend more money to spread the good word about the race and the city and it seems to be paying off. So, we're very, very excited and appreciate the council's support, the City of Biloxi, and again, the Police Department and Fire have been tremendous every year we've been down here. So, thank you all very much, appreciate the council's support too. And Mayor, as always, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. One more little update, George and I talked, and I think Robert too asked last week, you know, we just finished and completed the 44th Annual Slavic Invitational. This is, this is a golf tournament that the City of Biloxi sponsored, was a sponsor along with about, you know, 40 other folks from a community to do this golf tournament. And over 70, I think it was 500 and Nikki, 513 two-man teams, it's a thousand-plus golfers. 70% of them come in from out of town and I think at the Bova Drive, it's about 700 room nights. And, you know, the City of Biloxi was, you know, the mayor and the city council welcomed everyone as far as they had in the press. And so, we're very appreciative of the city's effort, but it was a good golf tournament and one of the, it is the biggest football of its kind. And again, 44th year and will be 45 coming up. So, anyway, that's the activities we can talk about right now, but we're going to have a good, a great golf party tomorrow and looking forward to, you know, the whole cruising experience. One other thing I would ask you to consider, the table on the advocate, the lobbyist, you know, from Key Impact Studies was on the table and I would ask you to consider bringing it up this time. Those kinds of services that are provided, you know, are year-round and we need advocates in a number of areas and I talked to a number of you to look at the report that was provided by Key Impact Strategies to provide what's needed in these areas that are non-stopping and happening every day, especially when it comes from BP money, Go Mesa, again, some of the FEMA, MEMA issues that we're facing on a daily basis. So, I would encourage and ask you for the support of this advocacy and this contract on, again, we budgeted in the FY '19 year for that and again, those activities are going to be needed and on almost a daily basis between now and the end of the next legislative session. So, I would ask you and encourage you to bring it up off the table and go forward with it. Oh, and his registration, his registration as a lobbyist is cleared. So, that's it. Forget anything else? Help us, that's right. We need help, help Biloxi because I think it's really needed. He was, it was successful so far and he represented, we were the only municipality that he represents and advocates for, so we think it's valuable and bang for the buckets there. Please, yes, spread those expense cards, expenses to the minute, credit card travel expenses to the minutes, however you're supposed to say that.
All right, man, I think you did a good job.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
That concludes, alrighty. No depart, I don't see any departmental reports. We're going to start with the council reports, George.
Couple of questions. On a splash pad on a point, I think y'all was probably dealing with MEMA or FEMA, have that done, if nothing's happening? Have they received any money because it looks bad? So, I need to find out, all these people are supposed to be behind to help with somebody slowing the whole here.
Yeah, we'll get it done and, you know, still waiting for the decision to fix it. So, you know, if you want to support this, we'll go forward with it and pay it on our own nickel and then get it, you know, hopefully get it reimbursed.
What it seems to be a hole that would, I mean, I don't know, it seemed to be a problem that all happened and I mean, it's been delayed and delayed and delayed. And that's the main park down there, the splash pad and the plaza and yet it looks terrible.
Yeah, well, you know, everything from Nathan, from those areas, lights and a number of other issues, you know, we're saying that we needed reimbursement. So, it's the same set of issues that we have for MEMA and FEMA in that particular storm.
So, I mean, did MEMA refuse to pay?
Yeah. Just haven't yet, but we've appealed the lights as well as this on.
You know, we missed the main part of the summer and that park is used a lot, utilized. A lot of people go down there, bring their kids and everything, you know, the front door of City of Biloxi and yet it looks terrible. You know, so I mean, it's something that we need to take care of. That's why we need to step up and handle it ourselves and then build them later. I don't really know. But just sitting there and wasting a whole summer on one of our best parks around, it's not good for the citizen.
Again, I'm not sure whether that money's in the budget now, but we'd certainly, you support it, we'll go get it done and hopefully apply, just like we did on a number of other ones, wait for them to reimburse us.
Yeah, but you know, constantly having all these events down there.
I understand.
Now they have Salt Grass just opened up, that holds 472 people, there's going to be a ton of people down there. But you want your parks and everything in that area looking good, you know, so that's my thing from Ward 1, something needs to be done. So, I'll follow it up with you. I appreciate the report on the 750 because a lot of people want to know what happened to that money. But I mean, you get that many people coming to town, that's a good thing. That's why we do these things. That's why we support these events. That's a lot of people, you're talking about 1,100 golfers, right? And all their family coming in, coming to town with us. It's just like cruising the coast tomorrow. Downtown Biloxi, if y'all have never been here, you need to come downtown tomorrow. Just walk around. They'll have all kind of people, you'll be able to, even Peter can spend some money, you know, come out the hip or something. But the cars and everything, the people just love it. The people just walk around and talk about how great it is in the City of Biloxi. So, it's a good thing. Last thing there, Jerry, the van's gone on Thelma, Jerry? You took the van home or what? The white van, 962 Thelma? I was just wondering, that was a little hotel there, I was just wondering what happened to it.
Short-term rental.
They didn't pay though, that's the problem. Yeah, I know it's gone, I was wondering what happened to it. Just double check with that. Thank you.
Right, Ms. Newman? Ms. Deming?
I don't have much of a report, I just wanted to remind everyone of the pickleball tournament on the 13th. If you want to come out and see me and Nathan get our butts kicked, then be a great opportunity.
I didn't plan anything for my report, were you doing? I didn't plan anything for my report, but after Mr. Deming's comments, the line starts behind me. Thank you. No report today.
Okay, I have no report either. Okay, we're going to move on to public agenda, citizen comments. We have a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person strictly enforced. Would anyone on my left like to come up and speak? Come on up, ma'am. Please sign in, give us your name and your address for the record.
My name is Ann Thomas. I live in Edgewater Estates at 331 East View Drive. I'm here tonight to talk about the rezoning of 200 feet of land behind some of our homes from residential to neighborhood business. We didn't realize this was happening tonight, so we haven't really had much chance to get everyone up to speed, but I would like to, I would just like to say that we are not for this. We've been hoping there would be homes put there. This 200 feet of land will affect three or four of our homes, which means that these homes, they could have a gas station or a grocery store, a hospital, a school, a daycare. And that is not what we want. We're not sure what it will do to our property values. And even though they're only doing 200 feet right now, they wanted to do the whole 800 feet. But we're afraid that this is just the beginning. They'll get the 200 feet, that'll get their foot in the door and then they will do the whole 800 feet or more, because we have golf courses on three sides right now that they, and they've tried to rezone some of it before. I'm not exactly sure what happened there. But this is Edgewater Estates, we've been there over 50 years, we've paid our dues, and this is not something that our neighborhood wants. I have one quick little note from one of our neighbors that couldn't make it. She said, it was Wendy and Mike Lally. I highly oppose a rezoning proposal issue on the agenda this evening. Please reconsider denying this request as I feel it would be in the best interest of the residents living in Edgewater Estates. Heavy traffic concerns in the future of what type of business will occupy this property or just a couple of reasons, we oppose this rezoning. And that, we have a website, we've had a lot of comments on that, I've sent out emails, and that seems to be pretty much the way most of our neighbors feel. I haven't had anyone say, we just can't wait to have a gas station behind our house. So, we have several neighbors here tonight that live on Westview, which would be affected and hopefully they all get a chance to talk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my left?
Yes, I'm Keith Paul, I'm another resident of the Edgewater Estates. I live on 336 East View Drive and I'll mirror some of the comments that Ann Thomas mirrored as well too. I was in the Air Force, I decided to retire here because of family and the Edgewater Estates area is something that's very special to me. I remember coming over to visit family when I was a little child and sadly, over the years, I've seen an erosion, if you will, of that whole community. Golf courses gone, streets have changed, certainly more traffic. And this proposal, I am afraid that it indeed will do just exactly what Ann's talking about, that were we to change this from residential to business, that's just a little piece right there. I remember at one time, the property that I live on was up for sale and the people that were looking into developing Goosepoint Community, were actually talking at one time of taking that specific property and changing it into a street that was accessing the golf course. My fear is that with this thought that it'll turn into 200, 800, a potential street that they're talking about, that all of a sudden we introduce traffic that goes back to that back bay of which I live on, most of us live on, and indeed, that will, who knows, because we, there's been talk of the one fairway over by Keesler Credit, Federal Credit Union of changing into mixed residential business use. And my fear is that what if Cotton Ford decides to change his mind in changing that to business mixed use instead of just residential? So, I'd like you to please consider that. It's an old community, I think it's a community that's been certainly an asset to the City of Biloxi and I, along with the rest of the residents, are certainly opposed to this proposal. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left?
My name's Tom McCormick, I live on 327 Westview Drive. Day after Thanksgiving will be 34 years there. My wife has lived, she moved on the East View Drive when she was eight years old. She's close to my age, so you can factor that in. But obviously, I'm opposed to it because I, my property backs up to, if there's an extension of this rezoning, it could be in my backyard. So, I think if you drove through our neighborhood, most of our residents are very conscious and try to keep their property values in their house looking presentable. We've got an active PLA which tries to keep the entrances to the subdivision nice, which is a benefit not only for us, but for the City of Biloxi. So, I understand business and how it works and I don't know the protocol and I would ask this, if this is approved, I know when there were some proposals for the, about the property by Keesler, it was not approved. So, I guess one question I have is just protocol. If this is approved, if a business comes in and makes, I don't know how it's going to be put together, but if a business comes in, does that have to come before the city to be approved and do residents have an input on a property, on a business that could be in their backyard? I don't know what that protocol is, but does that have to go back through the Planning Commission to have a business approved down the road? So, thank you for your consideration, we've got a great neighborhood and we're just, we're trying to protect, you know, our investment in obviously the cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left?
Hi, I'm Belinda Mallory. I live at 335 Westview Drive. My husband and I built our house there 32 years ago. I really don't have a whole lot to add, I just want to reiterate that we are opposed to the rezoning, we're opposed to erode- We're opposed to a road being built. If it does end up coming back, the whole eight hundred feet, it will impact, and it will be in my backyard. I don't want that. Our neighborhood is a nice neighborhood. We have worked, worked very hard to keep our homes up. We've worked very hard on our entrances to keep them nice. And we don't, we don't want this. And I appreciate, appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Anyone in the back?
My name's Bobby Palermo, I live at 315 Westview. Similar to the other people here, residents. I'm retired Air Force, and I moved into Edgewater Estates because it was a family-friendly neighborhood. We have four children, we raised those four children now, they're all grown up now, and now we have grandchildren. And I'm opposed to the rezoning also, because it would come back, it would go all the way up to my back fence. And I wouldn't wanna subject my grandchildren to what activities may come forth. So, I concur with other residents that said already, and I'm opposed to the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anyone to the right? Anyone? Come on up, ma'am. Come on up. I, I need you to come on up. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Marliese Welty. I live at 1768 Curry Street in Biloxi. I was completely unaware that my home was not zoned for short-term rentals until I received a citation. I went to, to meet the citation thing this morning, and they advised me to come up here and speak my mind. My subdivision is in a single-family residence zone. There are, however, many long-term rental properties in my subdivision with multiple families that are not related residing in them. And these rentals are, these renters are not adhering to the parking or the living codes. The house next to mine has six cars at any given time parked up in the front lawn. And it just looks dreadful, okay? One of them hasn't been moved in over six months, it's just broke down there. These are obvious eyesore's, and they lower my property values. And it seems to go unnoticed by the city's code enforcement. I'm a single homeowner with one income. Renting out my master bedroom through Airbnb, it helps me supplement my income. But it also enables me to bring revenue to our coast, which we need, I feel. I've lived on the property for twenty years, and I live on it while I have the guests come and stay with me. So, I monitor the noise, the parking, the everything. I even have a petition with all my neighbors that have signed it, saying they, they are okay with it. Half of them didn't even know I was running an Airbnb, so. I cater primarily to families, members, whose relatives are stationed at Kessler, because I live outside of the gate. These Air Force families, they simply wanna come and visit their loved ones, but they can't afford expensive hotels. This is an alternative for them. They contribute financially by, they don't just sit in the room, they go out and they eat at our restaurants. They, they go to the casinos, they go to the shopping outlets, and they, they go to our businesses. And it just seems to me that certain city officials are profiling and targeting Airbnb and short-term rental, while they also have other positions in the Hotel and Lodging Association. And I think this is unethical and a conflict of interest. I, what I'd like to see is zoning laws changed, if even on a case-by-case basis. Because we're all different, we all have a different story. There are out-of-state investment companies that are renting, and I think that should not be allowed. So, that's my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that I missed? Anyone else? Okay, that concludes citizen comments. We're gonna move on to the policy agenda. Number A, Lucy?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize the change in zoning from RS-10 low-density, single-family residential to NB neighborhood business for land identified as 2730 Pass Road.
Okay, who's that motion and seconded by?
I'll make a motion. I made the motion, Ms. Newman seconded it last time.
Dr. Tizell?
Yeah. I can't support this ordinance, and, and let me tell you why. And I appreciate folks coming out and speaking tonight. We had a ward meeting, I wish you'd have caught me after the ward meeting. But in, in listening to this, their comments, and being very familiar with the neighborhood, and also in looking at the transcript from the Planning Commission meeting, in my opinion, it was somewhat evident that the intent was to rezone all four acres, neighborhood business, as I recall. And then the Planning Commission collapsed it so that only the frontage, basically two hundred feet deep for that lot along Pass Road, would in effect be changed if we approved this, this ordinance at this reading. The concern expressed by the residents of Edgewater Park have made it clear that they fear, if nothing else, for lack of a better term, I'll call it zone creep. We get this little bit zoned, and then we'll come back later and ask for the rest of it possibly to be zoned commercial, in this case, neighborhood business. Mr. Four is a businessman, I, I gather, just knowing a little bit about, about the man, not much. But that being the case, I, I can't support this. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, Ms. Newman?
What business, what kind of business are they trying to incorporate here?
Let me show you. Okay, this is the, this is the piece of property in question. And right now it's zoned RS-10, and it backs up to Edgewater Estates, which is the Westview Drive property that's been mentioned. The reason they asked for the zoning for the entire piece of property was because it was all one lot. So, what happened when it came before the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission and the City Council always have the right to reduce the scope and intensity of any zoning change request or anything else. So, this is, this is actually what happened. This is what you see from overhead, there's an existing metal building there, you, you may have seen it, that, that's been there. So, essentially what they were doing was trying to bring the property, or, or bring the building into compliance by changing the zoning for that piece. So, the request of the overall property being changed was reduced down to the first two hundred feet to accommodate the building that's already there. It's two hundred feet on this side, it's only about a hundred and seventy feet on this side. And you can see that it only affects the three properties there, and the city of Biloxi owns this piece of property. That, that belongs to us. It, it encroaches a little bit in the back of this property here. The rest of it would remain single-family residential. Now, one of the things about this zoning change request is that this is, this is something that is not something planners like. What this does is it reduces the property, it's called split-zoned. You have one long piece of property that has two different zonings on it, and they're not divided by a property line. So, what was discussed is that he's essentially asking to have enough parking around the existing building to accommodate the, a business to go in there. Now, we heard gas station, no, a gas station, it would be conditional use in NB. That means that it would have to go back through the Planning Commission and come back to the City Council for approval. And most of the, the undesirable uses would require conditional use approval, or would not be allowed. Neighborhood business is the zoning that is, is designed to be next to a neighborhood, because it's usually for businesses where the, the residents can walk to, like a drugstore or something like that. And if you go back to the zoning map, you can see that this is a roadway piece of property, a long strip piece of property, where the Community College is proposing to put in a road that would come back and become the new main entrance to the, the Community College at some point. I understand Mr. Four has donated that property to the Community College. Now, they've not come to us with the actual design yet, but they would have to do that because it's gonna involve our infrastructure. But if you look over to the other side, this property from here on down to Dubie's Road is already zoned NB. And if you look across the street, all of this property across the street is already zoned NB. So, and this is the, this is a, a little blow-up of, of what we had before. You can see that the city owns this, this piece of property here, and then the, the two owners that would be, I guess, affected by it if the zoning change is approved. This is one of those, this decisions, it's gonna be up to the City Council. You know, we're, we're not taking a position one way or the other on it from the, the staff standpoint, but wanting to make sure that you are aware of all the, the facts involved before you make a decision.
Are they offering a buffer?
Well, if this were going to be developed property, where they were coming in and actually putting a development on it, it would trigger the buffer, but because it's just an existing building that's already there, and basically they're gonna be using the, the parking that's already there and the building that's already there, unless they made building changes, it would not trigger the buffer requirement.
Can we still request one?
Now, the City Council can make that, can make that a part of the approval if you choose to. But, you know, we're, we're agreeable to this, or not agreeable to it, you know, but provided they put a, a buffer in. Just answer one more question, 'cause I know there were some concerns about, well, you know, this might be the first leg in getting other property rezoned on here. If Mr. Four decided to come back and rezone the rest of this property, the first thing that would have to happen is he would have to, if he asked for NB, he would have to isolate whatever is on the front piece of property. So, he would have to come back and subdivide this, this lot in order to ask for a proposal to do anything on the remainder of the property. And certainly if he proposed any additional development back in here, not only would he be required to go through DRC, go through the Planning Commission, and go through the Council, he had also, as you can see, probably gonna have to have a serious tree hearing on the rest of that property, too, so.
So, the building, was it a shed? What is it?
It's been a number of things. The last thing that was in there was a, one of these little jewelry assembly things, where they had customers that would come in, and they would string bracelets and those type of things there. I haven't been aware that it's ever been used for a shop, or a repair shop, or auto business, or anything like that. Some of y'all may remember something else being in there.
Were they, were they permitted to? Were, were they permitted to run a business at that location?
They were, they had the, the little string business in there.
How, how could you do that in a residential section?
I'm not sure exactly how that happened, where it was in there. I can go back and check, it was only there for, I think, six months, and then it, it closed and went away.
What was there before then?
I don't, I don't know, I honestly don't know what was there before then. As, as long as I've been going up and down the...
How was the building built, Jerry?
It's a steel building.
Okay, and who built it, and where they get the permit to build it?
I, I don't know, this is not a new building.
Is it an old building, is it new?
This is not a new building.
It's been there for a while.
It has been, yes, so.
But it still wasn't supposed to be there. Evidently, 'cause it's not zoned properly to have any business there. So, it wasn't supposed to be there.
If, if the zoning on this property has always been single-family residential, I'm, I'm just, I don't know how it was built there.
And he donated that road for a reason, to put more retail businesses in there.
That's exactly right. And that's, how wide...
Come on, they don't wanna figure this one out.
Well, there are a couple of things that, that I, I have some concerns about. How, how wide is the property that's been donated to the Community College? Do you know? You may not know off the top of your head.
I don't know, you can actually see a little transition here where it gets a little wider as you get down here. My guess would be that it's probably at least fifty feet. It would have to be at least fifty feet in order to provide a city right-of-way.
So then, if, if, let's say that road goes in, then just to the right of your pen on the remaining acreage of this parcel, I, I mean, I'm looking at the houses on Westview to the right there, and look how deep those are. So, I'm assuming going back to the other parcel, if that was gonna be residential, hey, there wouldn't be many residences, the lots would be running north and south, rather than east and west. Over there, and, and the, my point is, that could only pretty much be used for commercial purposes, which is the future ask, if you will, that they're concerned about. So, that being the case, I think, again, this is my impression, I may be wrong, but I think, I think I read it correctly, that the original ask before the Planning Commission was to rezone the whole parcel.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And, and I think that the, the idea was, once we do that, and once we get the road in, we're ready to go. Which is exactly the resident's concern.
Right, and, and again, even if the road is presented to the city, if they come in, if the Community College comes in with a site plan for that, it's gonna have to go through DRC.
We know all that, Jerry, that's part of the plan.
The Planning Commission.
That's no shock.
And the City Council.
Those are the steps you have to take to do anything.
Well, again, I'm not trying to defend anything here, I'm just telling you about the process.
I know, the process, the way it works.
Yeah, it would have to go to DRC, it would have to go to the Planning Commission, it would have to go through the City Council to get approval for that road to go in, because they're gonna be relying on our infrastructure. So, this is not something somebody's gonna sneak in overnight and, and, and put in. It's, it's gonna take a lot of review before the city, before not only the road goes in, but certainly before any development happened on there. But this, this is a council decision.
That building just didn't magically appear, and that's the problem. The building's not supposed to be there. Now, you have the right to take the building down. The building's not supposed to be there.
Well, no, I mean...
Oh, yeah.
It was obviously permitted at some point in the past.
Okay, it was, show me the permit.
If it was built with a permit, then it's grandfathered in when the zoning, when the...
I don't know about the grandfather, I don't know about the permit.
The land development order.
That should've been brought up at the, when y'all's meeting. You know? And you say now, you need to prove what was done.
I don't know how many years that building's been there.
My question, what options you got, other than voting it down? None. Right?
What do they propose to put there? Do you know, right off? Or that, that's unknown?
Well, what we were, what we were told is that it was gonna be a cabinet retail store, and with some assembly in the rear.
Well, and looking at the...
They, they bring you a plan for this retail store?
No.
Okay.
My understanding was, in reading the transcript, I believe, that it was, the steel building is to be used for Cajun planters, a business which specializes in backyard swings, picnic tables, it sounds like, outdoor furniture and accessories.
But it's typical, it, you asked a question about, do they bring us building plans? With any developer that we deal with, they usually come in to make sure they can get the zoning checked before they go develop plans or hire an architect or anything to come in. It's, they don't wanna go spend money, and this is any developer that comes in. They don't, don't wanna go spend money on expensive plans until they know that they've got the zoning correct.
I mean, I, I think your table is, is if somebody brings something back... I mean, I, I think you ought to table it, if there's somebody bringing something back, concrete, one way or the other. At least these people have to know there's an option we're going to be built there or not. Because I'm not, in that NB, there are all kinds of things whipping there. You know that yourself, Jerry. A lot of stuff falling there that people don't want in their neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, we've had that problem before up and down the pass road.
Is that a motion, George?
Yeah, I'm over the table.
We got a motion on the, motion to table it?
I'll, I'll second that. I'd also like to see if we can research and find out how that building got put up.
We can second that by Mr. Barrett. Go ahead.
If we can find out, if, just look and see if a permit has ever been pulled for that. Or, you know, I don't know how far back we can go or whatever.
We, uh, we, we have a new system and an old system. What we'd have to do is to go back into the old system and just see if it's in there, how that was done. I can tell you that building was not built here since I've been here and I've been here fifteen years. Okay.
I think that gives us enough time to kind of, uh, research it. So, we got a motion, we got a second.
We're still having some discussion.
Okay.
Can we do it for two weeks? Is that good?
Well, that, that'll be our next meeting. Uh, I would recommend, I mean, knowing when the building was constructed and whatever questions any further research might generate, doesn't change the facts before us and what the intent was. That's, that's why I will vote against tabling this and, and I would encourage you to vote, uh, against this ordinance tonight rather than table it. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
I want to be clear what we're tabling, what purpose. Are we tabling it so developers can hire architects and bring us in a design plan?
No, for them to find out.
My understanding is.
It's tabling it to get more information before we make a decision.
What information is what I'm asking?
I need to find out why the building was built there. It's not supposed to be there. That's one of the key things. It's set on, uh, in a residential neighborhood. It wasn't supposed to be there. So, I need to find out why it was put there and when it was put there, when it was permitted.
I just looked on the tax rolls just to see if I could get any information on this. It says, uh, it's a twenty-eight-hundred square foot building built in nineteen fifty-five. Now, I don't know if that's accurate, but that's what the plan rolls show.
Would that have been a part of the city in fifty-five? Did it go on that more west?
Yeah, but the neighborhood was still there.
Well, the point is, it wasn't even in Biloxi. It wasn't even in Biloxi when it was built, so.
If you don't want to table it, fine, I'll vote against it. It's up to me because I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay, right now, right now, we got a motion to, a motion to table it. Motion and a second to table it. We're going to go ahead and call for the question on that. All in favor of tabling it? It's three. And all against, is that four? One, two, Barrett, and who else?
And Joel.
I made a motion.
And four, okay. All against? Okay, Tisdale and Deming. Motion carries to table. And we'll put that on for what, uh, two weeks? Hey, Ms. Deming?
I feel like I should just both.
Six-two, six-two with Deming and Tisdale opposing. Oh, four-two, four-two.
Four-two.
Got my numbers mixed up. Yes, two, two weeks. Yeah. Cut it off. Two weeks. Okay, ordinance B?
Resolution to approve and execute agreement between the City of Biloxi and Key Impact Strategies LLC and B. Keith Hurd.
I need a motion on, motion on resolution. Motion by Dr. Tisdale. I'll make that second. Questions?
Yep.
Go ahead.
First, when, in the resolution, it states that we, that the first contract terminated in March thirty-first. Do you know when that agreement began?
December, it, it was passed in December of twenty seventeen.
Do you know when or if, is, is Mr. Hurd here? Do you know when or if Mr. Hurd was registered prior to us finding out that he's not? With the state, not with any other group, but with the state. The reason I'm asking that is there's some, there are some severe penalties that are encumbered by the, by the city as well for hiring an authorized lo- an unauthorized lobbyist. And we're talking about fifty dollars a day during the period that we hired him. That's, I mean, that's like ten and a half thousand dollars. And then there's a criminal penalty for Mr. Hurd, um, that's imposed of up to six thousand dollars for a second. And we've hired, we've, we have hired him twice, which I think would be a second offense. Um, and potential time in jail. I, I don't know how we're going to reconcile that. Have we discussed this with the Secretary of State's office to make sure that they're not going to? But have we had conversation? Because we are, section five eight seventeen, um.
Isn't there a maximum of, uh, ten days on that?
Um.
I, I believe it's fifty a day, a maximum of ten days, but as far as the city's concerned, as far as our duty, we have to report any money that's been paid to him in the calendar year. We didn't make any payments to him. The first payment we ever made to him was in twenty eighteen. And the city's report would be due in January twenty nineteen. So, as far as the city's concerned, any reports we have to file, we are not in any violation. I can't speak to him, what he did and all that.
And that's fine. Um, but he is in violation, he has been in violation. He may be compliant now.
Yeah.
Um, however, there are, there are criminal sanctions that are imposed on lobbyists that fail to register and he's done this multiple times. I think that it's, it's not really incumbent upon us to do our due diligence. I believe it's also his obligation, his responsibility to maintain every licensure required and to know of those licensures required and to continue to move forward employing someone that failed to maintain his licensures, I think, is, is, um, problematic on the city's behalf. Um, I, I guess, I can't support this because any professional that fails to maintain the appropriate licensure and continue to do business, um, I, I can't, I would never hire. The first time had I known that and I couldn't rehire knowing that. I don't have much more to say.
Yeah, I, I don't know any of the particulars of what he's doing with the registration. He did, uh, we had heard something that he, he thought he was registered. He tasked that to somebody else. Uh, as I saw, the penalty was fifty a day for a maximum of ten days, but it could be, any fines could be relieved upon showing of, like, an excusable neglect. I, I don't know what his circumstances are.
You could be, you could be correct. I think the amount of the fine, in my opinion, is irrelevant. Whether it's de minimis or substantial, it's, it's the act that I'm more concerned with.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I, uh, what I have is that he registered at nine twenty-six eighteen, but it expires twelve thirty-one eighteen. So, I mean, he can't even go into next year anyway. I don't understand why they're doing that. I mean, he hadn't been registered. That's why I agree with Robert. We didn't know that and we give him seven thousand dollars and I thought that was, I always thought it was too much money anyway. I think ten thousand a month, that's just my opinion. Why we believe that?
Let me respond. You know, the contract was to, to represent us. Although we paid him ten thousand a month, there was a fixed, you know, amount of money. But, you know, he's been advocating, you know, throughout the term, even, uh, you know, at the legislative and after the legislative system. So, we just paid him at a rate of ten thousand a month. You know, the rate, if he works twelve months, he's still, you know, for that abocation, it's going to be that, uh, that total amount of the contract.
Yeah, well, I took the shot with you the first time and I did it, uh, you know, because of the connections he had before his four months when we hired him, but that's why I voted against it the next time. Kind of getting, first of all, they didn't get anything back.
Wait.
And you can say what you want.
Okay.
Let me, let me finish. You know, we put out the money.
Did you read the report?
Okay, we didn't get back, yeah, I got the report.
Okay.
I got the report later. Everybody got one, you know? But, I mean, what, what'd you do? Well, we're supposed to be representing the taxpayer and their money.
And that's the intent.
And we're supposed to be getting something back for what we're doing.
That's exactly the intent.
Right.
If you think somebody else can do.
Let, let, let me say this.
Let me say this.
It's my turn. You can finish. When I finish, you can talk.
All right, gentlemen, one at a time, please.
So, I mean, I just always told you, I thought it was too much money to pay anybody, ten thousand a month. I just felt that was too much money.
Fifty thousand for the contract, for the year.
I'm just saying, I just thought that's what, too much money plus expenses. Okay, then our biggest problem, we had no report. Then we complained, she got a report, we asked about it, whether he registered, then he registered. So, I'm, I just, I'm kind of have a big time problem supporting anything that just keeps falling in line every time we ask the question. I mean, he's supposed to be representing us. He's supposed to be bringing all the stuff back to us, you know? We're not supposed to keep saying, oh, you lobbyists, or you this, or you that, you know? And VP money is state money. And nothing to do with federal government, it's state money. I know he's got a lot of connection in Washington. I don't know about Jackson.
Okay, I just wanted, let me just add one thing. Um, just to clear, just to clear something that Mr. Lawrence stated. You said that he, his registration only lasts until the thirty-first of December and so he couldn't. Actually, the terms, uh, the terms for registration of a lobbyist, the terms, no, no, George, you're not showing. The form actually only provides for a term beginning no earlier than January first and, and.
I read that.
Continuing no later. So, all they have to do is re-register. So, that's not my, my main problem. The problem is, is what I've already espoused. And, um, to that, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that there isn't another lobbyist that we could hire.
Well, in my opinion, okay, this is, in my opinion, it's like anything else. First of all, if you can support this, that's good. If you can't support it, then why? You don't think you, you need these kind of abocation and services?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's not.
Okay, let, let me ask you. Do you think we need this kind of services in this abocation? Yes or no? Then if, if it's yes, then, and you want to still vote no, then it's Keith Hurd. Is it, is it Keith Hurd specifically?
It is.
Or is it Keith Hurd, the, the amount of, of, of problem? So, let's narrow it down. So, if we correct these, and, you know, we want to sign up, uh, you know, somebody. If it's not Keith Hurd, who else? And if it's, if it's, uh, if it's somebody else, how much? So, these are the same questions. My opinion, this is the best, you know, representation we could possibly have and we've already presented a number of, uh, positions that we took, you know, took advantage of in the millions of dollars. So, you do what you want to do, okay? It's my position that this is the best, uh, contract we could get and, and the best advocate we could get. Now, again, it's your, your call, y'all, you know, this is, you know, this is what it's all about. I've stated my, my position is that I think this is the best advocate we could get.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah.
Dr. Tisdale?
Um, so Gulf Mesa, that's the Gulf of Mexico exploration. Has to deal with, I guess, gas and oil royalties, would that be right? And states get some and it, it goes through the county?
States get some, and then coastal counties get, you know, distributed.
Right.
From Texas, Louisiana.
Comes through the counties though, but.
Not in, you know, not in, uh.
But somebody has to advocate on our behalf because you're talking about for the next, what, thirty-five? I can't recall. I read it last week. Thirty-five or forty years worth of whatever royalties are coming in from these leases out there for these Gulf states. And you've got the Office of the Inspector General, the Audit and Appeal related to FEMA. Well, who's going to twist arms up there at the federal level? I know we deal with FEMA down here. FEMA's down here every two weeks and we're touching base with them. There are still some issues, uh, loose strings, if you will, that, uh, loose threads that, that, that have to be tied up. Who's going to advocate for that at the national level for us? I mean, that's my concern. And what you've said is, if, if we got to get a good guy, this guy's worth the money. And if you don't want this guy, who do, who can we come up with? And if you don't want to pay him this much money, then how much do you want to pay him? Or how much do you want to pay somebody to go up there and advocate? But to sit down here without an advocate and, and hope you get these monies, which is what a lot of cities do, and what I found out with my experience with FEMA is you want to be at the front of the line and know who to talk to in a timely manner in order to get things moving. You want to, if you can get at the front of the line and stay at the front of the line, that's what you want to do.
Dr. Tisdale, that's, that's exactly the point. And, you know, we started this in, in two thousand and fifteen, these daily, uh, we, every other week, meeting with FEMA and MEMA. And, and you, you saw the position we were in. And, and actually, you know, uh, the Washington conversations that we had as we tried to get the, the money flowing and on a ongoing kind of a situation with our program management. You know, HNTB was, ran out of money. So, what we had to do, those kinds of things are not, you know, at a legislative, uh, uh, state level. These are big dollars that we're talking about. We're burning about one point four million of, a year with regard to program management with the north and the south contract. That's still going to go on. We're still need some position to come, get that reimbursed. And, uh, you know, we had no choice. We, we bit the bullet. So, that's one of the things, as well as this OIG audit. That's a, a national level and these conversations and the support that we got from MEMA in support of those high dollar situations was a direct result of, of a Key Impact Strategy.
There's another point I'd like to make and that is FEMA used to maintain an office down here and that office dried up and disappeared a year ago dealing with Katrina and, you know, how many, how many years they were down here, a bunch, but they left about a year, maybe a year and a half ago. So, now everything that used to go over, over by the Coliseum to be approved by somebody.
Right.
Uh, with FEMA and MEMA and this infrastructure program. Now, it's going to Atlanta and when it lands on somebody's desk there, it's not like a, a small pile over here by the Coliseum. Now, you're on a pile with everybody else in the southeast. That's correct?
That's exactly correct.
That's the way I took it and they've not opened another office down here. So, anything we can do to keep things moving, that's the whole thing. You got to keep things moving. We, uh, I think we sat on needles and pins for, I don't know, a year and a half, two years, three years, wondering if we're going to get reimbursed for the seafood museum. First, they told, if, as I recall, first, you got to elevate this thing because it's in the flood plain. Okay, we did that. Then the inspector general, a different arm of the government, comes in and said, what'd you raise it for? We're not going to pay the elevation cost.
Second, third.
Well, that was, I mean, the museum's there. It's three or four or five years after somebody already approved it. I mean, you were doing something else at the time, so was I, but that.
I wasn't.
No, you weren't, George. So, so we're going to blame it all on you. But anyway.
I tell you what, Keith Hurd wasn't around either.
No, he wasn't.
They took out a million dollars back.
No, he wasn't, but maybe, but maybe if he was around or somebody.
He was around Washington.
If, maybe if, if he was around or somebody was around, we wouldn't have, wouldn't have had to wait for how many years it was just to find out if we're going to get reimbursed. I don't know, a couple of million dollars for that.
Two point three million, we wind up settling for a million.
Mr. Barrett, you have anything?
I'm sorry.
I agree that we have to have somebody to represent us. Um, however, and Lu, and with what Robert said, I do think that we need to make sure that we're not doing anything incorrectly. Um, if you feel that Mr. Hurd is the right man for the job, then I'll make a motion to table this for two weeks so that we can check in and get an opinion from the Secretary of State to make sure that nothing illegal has been done to where we cover ourselves. So, I'm going to make a motion to table this for two weeks.
Well, let, let me, and, and I appreciate that, that, uh, that effort. And I would like to understand exactly what, what we were asking for and then what is that going to, you know?
Well, Robert has, evidently Robert has looked into it. So, Robert, you know.
What questions should we ask in order to get confirmation?
He can give us, maybe put together a list of what needs to be asked to make sure that we're on the right side of the law on this.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, you got a motion on the table, uh, to table it, second by Ms. Newman. Um, any questions on the table?
Uh, my, my only question is, we had a, a motion and a second earlier. Do we need to take that off the table? For the second, for the second reading? Yeah, I made a motion, Dixie seconded it.
Well, this is strictly for tabling.
I'm sorry.
This was strictly tabling, Dr. Tisdale.
You're right, okay.
Any comments on the table?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, and I, I have a comment on the table and, um, and, and, and my colleague, Mr. Deming, I, I know he looked into it. But at this point, it's what, in my opinion, it's water under the bridge. No disrespect in that area, but it's, it's already done. So, either we're going to have to pay that fine or we're not. Uh, we're, we're at the point where we need to ask for forgiveness or, and, and kind of move this on. Um, looking for another lobbyist, I think Mr. Hurd is the guy. Um, I had a chance to, to meet with him when I went to Washington myself. On the three times that I went, uh, he met me personally. He's the guy that knows the ins and the outs. And like I said, and we have twenty-five million reasons with that Kessler gate for, for him being instrumental in us, helping us get that. So, when it comes down to lobbying, we have to have somebody on the ground who already know. Not only up. So, when it comes down to lobbying, we have to have somebody on the ground who already know, not only up there in Washington, but also in Jackson. He's been a key, uh, for us, very instrumental, and we need to kind of move this forward. Now, they've already showed us the information that we need to have. The paperwork is in front of us, it's done. We can't change the past. The only thing we can do is, if there's a penalty, if there's a fine, we can pay it. I agree with that, but it's time to kind of move it forward. And like I said, you know, we got a guy who already know this, a guy who already have the contacts, and like I said, he's already out there. And he's already talked to everyone that I know that are, are the who's who. Like Dr. Tisdale was saying, at some point, we're going to have somebody that's got to fight for us. And right now, we have nobody fighting for us. We already know how they feel about us in Jackson. So, we need somebody on the floor up there. So, those are my comments in that area. So, I'm going to vote no to table it. I think this needs to go ahead and move forward. Any other questions concerning it, Mr. Deming?
I just want to be clear that I don't disagree that we need someone advocating for us. But my concern is, there are many other qualified and connected lobbyists out there. There should not be any professional that we hire that we have to hold their hand or walk through anything to make sure they are, they are qualified with the state, the federal government, or any other body that they work with. If this has happened, there's already smoke. And where there's smoke, there's fire, or there's going to be more smoke. I just think we should look into possibly finding someone else that can replicate the same quality and, um, contribute to Biloxi what Mr. Hurd has in the past. I don't know that we've even looked or asked, and if we have, present a compelling argument to the council why Keith Hurd is the only one that can lobby for Biloxi.
And I'm going to comment one more time on that before I yield to you, Mayor. It's about relationships. We have a relationship with this lobbyist. I don't want to go find somebody that I don't know. I don't want to go find somebody that we don't have a relationship with. We want to find someone who's already in the trenches, who we have a, a personal relationship with. And, and yes, you know, I understand what happened, it happened, okay? But at some point, we got to move it forward, and we got to go ahead and start bringing money back into Biloxi. And like I said, if it wasn't for the Kessler Gate, uh, if, if, you know, if you look at the Kessler Gate, bringing the money in, him working with Ms. Murdis Frank and different people, that's the reason why we got Biloxi moving now. It's because of people like Keith Hurd. And I watch this myself personally. Uh, Dr. Tisdale, and then the mayor?
Yeah, I mean, the, we have a number of different opinions for various reasons up here, and we're considering different things, or what the next step is. Um, uh, I'm in favor of tabling this, uh, for no other reason than one of the council members is not here tonight and may have some thoughts or comments, just like anybody else, pro or con or whatever. So, I'm in favor of, uh, of the motion to table it this time.
Okay, Mayor, you have anything else?
Yeah, the, again, we've been in talk with, I mean, uh, the city of Biloxi, in the position it is in, it needs some special tools and some special, uh, support and services. You know, in my opinion, we, our first adventure with lobbyists was, we, uh, did some things together with, in the tune of fifty thousand dollars, uh, and shared half of it with Gulfport for a number of years, uh, or at least one legislative session. But this is a different level. Nobody need, has three hundred and forty-four million dollars' worth of infrastructure projects at risk. And even though we paid it and we got reimbursed, it's still at risk, okay? You don't understand, don't understand that, that it, they could take eight point two million dollars from us, okay? That direct letter from, uh, Gregory Michelle, MEMA to FEMA in support of the city of Biloxi's position is a direct result of those kinds of abocation for the city of Biloxi. I can tell you, you know, uh, we spent three hours, Mike, with, with the head of MEMA and understanding what we, we've got a hundred and something million dollars' worth of money left, and it has nothing to do with Jackson. It has something to do with, with FEMA, okay? There are millions of dollars at risk that if we don't have that particular advocate, we, we're rolling the dice, okay? We're rolling the dice, one point two million dollars a year, one point three million dollars a year, just keeping these projects going, okay? So, in my opinion, all, with all due respect, you know, there may be some other folks. I don't know them, I, I don't have the experience to, to say that this guy could do a better job. I just know that this is an opportunity. This is, you know, bang for the buck. It, it, uh, it's reasonable and, uh, you know, uh, and it's reasonably priced based on what his, you know, his, uh, rates and, and services are. So, I mean, uh, it's my opinion that this is Keith and Key Impact Studies, and what he brings to the table is the best course for Biloxi. Now, you know, again, if, uh, we have a number of specific questions that would satisfy Robert Demings, you know, Councilman Demings, you know, uh, comfort level, you know, in a couple of weeks, we can visit this again.
Last question.
And right before, right before you, you hit it, I want to just touch on what you just said. That eight million dollars affect my area, and we've been suffering for the last eight years. And to have someone there who can ensure that we keep that money coming to straighten out this community. We already got a community that's down, and we need to bring it back up. So goes War Two, so goes the rest of the Biloxi. And we can't continue to have that one eyesore based on a few dollars, uh, a few dollars versus eight million dollars. So, go ahead, uh, Councilman Deming.
How did Keith Hurd come to the city of Biloxi?
How did, well, over the, of course, he was Chief of Staff of Senator Cochran, okay? And, and as he stepped aside and, you know, went into, developed key impact studies and a number of clients. Uh, and again, basically, uh, the experience that we had with him as Chief of Staff of Senator Cochran and, you know, the, the contacts that he had, he was able to, uh, you know, uh, put together, I guess, you know, a, a plan that was most beneficial. You know, that eight point two million dollars is related directly to the overpayment of HNTB, okay? And that happened, when did that start? This whole project should have been, been done in two thousand and thirteen, okay? And we're still fighting that battle every day. Now, in the, through the course of, you know, through the course of time, and after, I guess, six or seven months after he, uh, stepped aside from, uh, Senator Cochran's Chief of Staff, then, uh, we were able to kind of connect, and I'm not sure of the timing when it was, but certainly, uh, I saw a lot of benefit right off the rattle in, you know, in, in him advocating for us, the first go-around. Both at the, you know, the, uh, the BP and some of those other, uh, things that were taking place in Jackson, but also, you know, Gomaesa, as it stepped up from fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year to two million dollars a, a year that comes to, you know, our counties down here. So, uh, over the course of time, since about two thousand and fifteen, um, you know, we, Felix and I witnessed, uh, uh, again, what, what his skill level is and, and his, uh, you know, we thought it was, it was a, a great thing to take advantage of that, of what he brings to the table.
And just on a personal note, I was able to, uh, when I was in DC myself, um, over the holidays, he was, he was able to put me at the table with the EPA and, and show them some of the issues that we were going through with the roads and different things. So, we need that tie. We need that connection, and we need that tie to help continue to move our community, and especially my community, because you guys know what I've been going through, to keep that moving forward. And that's pretty much all I got to say about that. Uh, any other questions or concerns on this tabling, the table issue? Okay, we're going to call for the question. All in favor of tabling it, raise a hand. Okay, one, two, three, four, okay, six, what is it, five, one, five, one. And I'm in opposition. So, we're tabling it. Two weeks, October the sixteenth. All right, I need a motion on the consent agenda. Moved by Dr. Tisdale, need a second. Second by Ms. Newman. I'm going to start with Mr. Barrett on your end.
I have nothing.
Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Ooh.
I'm tired of talk, I'm tired of talking to you all tonight.
Mr. Deming? Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Let's see, we have the whole planning commission. Yeah, I guess you're reappointing all of them. Have you looked? Have you looked at changing anybody? I mean, they've been there, somebody that's been there thirty years, they've been here like when you was a kid. Now, I was just wondering, you had said, no, I'm bringing this up because you had said But I, the reason, the reason I brought this up, because the mayor had said before, he was thinking about changing a few people, making some moves. And that's why I brought it up, because it's the same bunch. Now, if they want to do that, that's fine, it's up to them. And I was just going back to what you had mentioned about, you might make a few moves, get younger people in, you know, change some, that's not a problem. You got to do that eventually. Even Jerry Creel's been there too long, so you got to change him sooner or later.
Been here as long as you, Mr. Lawrence.
You know?
Oh!
You know?
But, uh, these are good people, they, they show up. We have almost a hundred percent attendance at every meeting. They're very articulate, they have the ability to discern, they ask good questions, they know the history of Biloxi, they know the areas that we're talking about.
So, one of them died, we just shut the whole thing down?
No, sir.
Okay, I was just wondering.
But, uh, but we've, we've got good, we've got good
You can't stay forever the same way.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you go ahead. You, you good?
No, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, he got more. Come on, George.
I noticed this on, on K with, uh, everything, because we got everything straight with McElroy. I know they lost the suit. We won that suit in court. So, everything is working fine, there's all agreement here, or we're going to go back to court?
I think Wayne Hingen and Jane are still here, maybe? I think, yeah, everything's, uh, the suit was resolved in Biloxi's favor, and, uh, they've agreed on an additional area to, to rent out, and we've agreed on that, that amount. So, this is amendment to the existing lease.
So, everything's good. I mean, y'all dealt with Mr. McElroy, so they all met with him about the, the new rental, the same plan, everything been, that's all I'm trying to say. If I don't see him tomorrow morning, we got sued again.
You can go back.
Because then, oh, Paul Tisdale will be concerned, makes his head hurt.
Friendly lawsuit.
Uh, uh, this laugh with P on this water department thing, are we, are we doing, what are we doing here? Oh, Peter and Paul, like, you know, uh, attorney, esteemed attorney. So, it's a good thing for us. Are we reading all the meetings, or we having problems now? Was it not doing it before?
All right.
So, I think that's all for me. But we all changed orders again. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Deming?
I just want a clarification of a, I know Kenny is at the MM, I think he's one of the new directors for the MML, and we're paying his registration, which is a reasonable expense for the city to have him part of the MML. Is that understood correctly? Nothing further.
Okay. All right, and I, I just have a question, Oscar Renda, the, the change order, is that concerning, uh, Raynor Street?
No, sir, that is entirely of the weather.
Of the weather, so you, we giving them a couple more days?
Uh, weather, that would push it out, council approves, it will push out the contract in January twenty nineteen.
Okay, and what about, uh, Raynor Street, is that upcoming?
We are, uh, in discussion with Oscar Renda on that, uh, on technical details, we will call, and, uh, we have our provision they have there.
Okay, right, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda?
Yeah, uh, could you explain H, what exactly we doing to Main Street Crossing? H, like in Henry?
That's at the activation.
Yeah, and activation what?
Technical, because as we were told, you've been, uh, that you know that project is a group of funding, the Main Street Crossing. But we have to now make our design, put it in MDOT specifications, yeah. So, basically, this resolution is to just ask MDOT to activate the project and assign it one of their project numbers. And this project is basically just going to elevate the roadway of Main Street to take out the big, the big gray change at the railroad crossing.
I mean, instead of having stucks
More like Quarter Avenue. More like Quarter Avenue.
Yeah. So, we've got another one stuck, that's cost like, once a week, we get one stuck there. We can't have any more accidents, that's for sure. So, this is going to be, and affecting goes forward now, how long this going to take?
Well, we have to go through the MDOT process, which is long, uh, but I'm estimating we should be under construction within a year.
Why are you doing MDOT?
Because that's who we got the grant from. They gave us a grant to do this.
I mean, yes, that's got fifty feet both sides of the track?
Yes.
I mean, it's always been like that, since they had trains.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, they won't give us grants for this type of project. They will assist us if we close a crossing, but they will not assist us for upgrades.
About statute, MDOT is responsible for the crossing. So, they have to be in the, they have to coordinate with everybody, and they, they actually, it all has to really be channeled through them, even though we're, we're probably going to wind up paying most of it.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the cons That was your last, all in favor of the consent agenda? And I'll take oppositions afterwards. All in favor, is everyone, any opposition to any? Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? Dr. Tisdale, Mr. Barrett? Okay, everybody's in favor. Motion carry on the consent agenda. All right, code enforcement here, Mr. Creel?
The, uh, the first case on the agenda, Matthew Hutchinson, Port, uh, one one four oh four Parker Circle. That case has been resolved. The second item on the agenda, Sheena Nguyen, one fifty-six Rosetti Street, that property is still in violation.
Okay, anyone here to represent Ms. Sheena Nguyen? Ms. Sheena Nguyen? We consider that matter closed.
Item C on the agenda is also Sheena, Sheena Nguyen, and, uh, this is for Zero Howard Avenue. And it's still in violation.
Okay, is that all three of them combined?
Yes, sir, these, these are all connected. Uh, actually, she had come before us, uh, about a year ago, and was wanting to do a, a minor subdivision in there, but we haven't heard anything since, and
Tell you that wasn't going to fly.
She has not responded to, uh, any of our, uh, mail transactions.
Shane done anything, son?
No, sir.
You sure, you got, you got to make sure, y'all thought the planning commission, them old people, make sure they're waiting. Because people like her does this all over the city of Biloxi. They do nothing. They go buy pieces of property, they don't want to plow them, and they want to do this, and they leave them like this trash.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's making Positneck look bad down there.
Anyone here in
Guess y'all know where Positneck
Speaking for Sheena Nguyen? Sheena Nguyen, we consider those three closed.
That four of them.
Yeah, well, we get, did the first one by itself.
Okay.
Second three together.
D, D and E are basically the same thing. It's, uh, it's, uh, the adjacent properties. All of this was part of what she had proposed. Here are the, here are the pictures.
Okay. Ms. Creel, um, Mr. Deming? Okay. Ms. Creel, um, Mr. Demme asked you to read, read all three of them into the record. We did the first one.
B, C, D, and E all belong to Sheena Nguyen and are all contiguous properties, uh, with different parcel numbers or different addresses on them. So, uh, uh, from a legal standpoint, they could vote on all of them together or separately.
And we can, and I consider those matters closed.
Well, he only cited Zero Howard. I just wanted to make sure that he included Two Howard and Three Howard as well.
Okay. And they're all still in violation. Item F on the agenda, Terry Ostenson. This is 239 Ethel Court, and this one is still in violation.
I tell, hey, Jerry, I told Mr. Walt Rhodey, I said they finally found out where Ethel Court, and they paved it, and now we got a citation on four people. Ain't nobody knew where Ethel Court was six months ago. Got laws going downstairs court to get the Ethel Court, you know?
Mm-hmm. It's hidden back in there. You have to know where you're going.
Okay, is anyone here, Terry, uh, to represent Terry A. Olson? Anyone here to represent Terry A. Olson? We consider that matter closed.
Item G on the agenda, Mark A. Parish, uh, Zero Cedar Lake Road. That case has been resolved. Item H on the agenda, Mark A. Parish, Zero Cedar Lake Road. That case has been resolved. Item I on the agenda, Deborah Ann Graham, 211 Howard Avenue. This property's still in violation. That's it.
Anyone here representing Deborah A. Graham? Deborah A. Graham, we consider that matter closed. I need a motion on the routine agenda. Motion by Dr. Tisdale.
I'll second. Nate, Mr. Barrett made the motion, I'll second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. At least I didn't call you Miss, Mr. Newman. George, you have any questions?
Yeah, like, uh, where's our money? Somebody, one of y'all, somebody, both of y'all look, they look good, like that. Little routine. And while we're doing our finances, uh, uh, we checked with, uh, Mike Leonard, and all y'all still have little package here, where they corrected, uh, eleven million dollar mistake. Do y'all have one of these? Did y'all see that? That's what's the problem. I told y'all last week, I said, look at that. But they did, they moved one of the, of the SIR expenses, but they never moved the revenue. So, you either put them both in or leave them both out. All they did, we took the eleven point five million out, corrected that amount. So, took that twenty-six million back to fifteen million. So, Mike Leonard did that. Y'all said, for me to do that, we did it.
All right, thank you. Okay, any more questions on routine agenda? All in favor? Is unanimous? Motion carry. All right, steady agenda, A. I need a motion on the steady agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Newman, second by Mr. Barrett. Any questions on it? Ms. Newman?
Uh, just in a nutshell, uh, cases have been arising where people who are not in compliance with the short-term rentals are trying to get in compliance, but they're being refused because they're not in the, um, zone, they're not zoned correctly under this specific ordinance. So, I think we need to look at it and, um, maybe expand a lot, more so along the water's edge and maybe even, uh, have determinations case-by-case basis, because everyone, like the lady said, is different. And, um, some of them are right outside the outskirts of what is approved and makes them no different than the other and, uh, and common sense wise should be approved. So, again, should be determined by case-by-case basis, in my opinion. So, I think it need to be, and it, it should be looked into more appropriately by the planning commission.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Barrett, any other questions?
Yeah, like, uh, what is the water edge? What are we talking about, the water edge? Waterfront?
Um, short-term rentals.
Yeah, I'm talking about here, water edge. It says water edge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have some-
Go, go ahead, Doc, I'm sorry.
Basically, short-term rentals are permitted in some areas, uh, conditionally permitted in others, and not per, permitted at all in single-family residential.
Correct.
And if, if I understand this correctly, uh, the water's edge, I'm thinking you got the bay, you got the gulf, there might be a bio. I can't see a short-term rental on Keegan's Bio, but it would be eligible. Um, um, but wondered about natural drainage ravines. It's almost like the gaming site, you know, where you have to be, uh, within, uh, so many feet of the water or whatever. But, um, in, in looking through this, uh, much concern's been expressed that if left unregulated, available technology allows short-term rentals to exist in a manner that evades or avoids both taxation and regulatory safeguards, and also allows its use to exist in inappropriate zoning classifications without ease of detection. Detection, we've said, is always going to be an issue. And in, in order for folks to get on the radar, which was my whole point, we, because we've been through this a number of times, uh, simply that, so that whoever is running a short-term rental is basically paying the appropriate taxes, is, is the first reason. The other thing is that it, it is difficult to monitor. And I would say that any new property owner coming into the city, uh, or prospective property owner, or somebody who's considering short-term rentals, should head straight to Mr. Creel's office to find out currently where you can have them and where you can't have them, rather than after the fact, because we, we've seen a number of, a number of different folks who've come in and, and as we heard tonight, and pointed out that basically they didn't know. And if you're not familiar with zoning, and I sure wasn't until I got elected, and I've got a little better at it. But, uh, in terms of enforcing, even if we approve this after having it studied and researched, um, how is that going to change, or how are we going to change our enforcement? I mean, it's just-
What this, what this calls for is just for the study, to deter, determine, are there appropriate locations where maybe the property is on single-family, where maybe it should be reconsidered? You know, we've talked about this before, that the, the water is the draw. Uh, the, the people who wanna do short-term rental are not buying properties, you know, up in the middle of the city. Uh, usually, it's within one or two blocks of the water's edge, uh, whether it's, uh, along Beach Boulevard or along the, the Back Bay or even along the rivers. We, we've identified some on the rivers where there was some short-term rental going on. But, in, in discussing this, you know, there are, are three options here that, uh, the planning commission would consider. Number one, we can continue to enforce it the way that we're doing it right now, where we had about a dozen people before, uh, community court this morning, who are operating short-term rentals in single-family zonings. We found them on the internet, uh, and they were advertising less than thirty days. Uh, anything below thirty days is short-term rental, anything above thirty days is not short-term rental. It's considered permanent. So, the, uh, the, what happens? We wind up chasing our tail, because what'll happen is, we bring it to somebody's attention, they remove the less than thirty-day advertisement off of their website, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they stop doing it for less than thirty days. They're still on there. Now, we've, we've been working on eighty-nine cases, and we've been able to reduce that down to about thirty, because we found out that even though some of them were advertised as Biloxi, they're actually not in the city limits of Biloxi. They just use our name, uh, because people know where Biloxi is. People don't know where some of these surrounding cities are. We have three options. We can go ahead and continue to enforce the ordinance the way it is. Uh, we can, uh, let the planning commission do a study that would, uh, create, uh, certain overlay districts, uh, within a certain distance from the water's edge that would, uh, uh, maybe allow those properties to be considered. Uh, one of the reasons that we suggest that is that some of those properties, uh, are now in a more intense flood zone than they were in before the maps were adopted in 2009. Now, I agree with Dr. Tisdale. If you're buying property, you're supposed to do your due diligence, and you're supposed to research these things before you buy it and assume that you can just use it for purposes. People do that all the time with, with business properties, where they'll check to see if the zoning is correct before they go and buy a piece of property. So, we can enforce it the way it is. We can consider creating an overlay district. Or, one of the things that we discussed today in the department is another option might be that we consider certain properties within a certain distance of, of Beach Boulevard or of the water's edge to rezone to multifamily residential. What does that do? You know, even if it's a single-family house on the property? Well, if we choose to rezone property to multifamily residential, what that would do is kick all of these properties into the conditional use category, where it could be handled on a case-by-case basis. And anyone who comes in with an application for that area would still have to go through the planning commission and the city council to get approval on a case-by-case basis. But it would leave the decision about that in the hands of the, um, planning commission and the city council about whether or not it was actually approved or denied. But in order to consider any of those, there needs to be a study done. And, uh, what the staff would do is to put together some maps indicating, you know, these seem to be the areas where, uh, you know, maybe this should be considered or maybe not. Uh, we'd present that to the planning commission. There'd be a public hearing held on it. If the planning commission determines that, uh, these requests should be considered, they can vote to either recommend approval or denial. Uh, the people would have a chance to voice their opinion about it, for it or against it, and then it would come back to the city council for final consideration to approve it or deny. Uh, what's happening right now, basically, is, is just what I said before. We're essentially chasing our tail in the department, because, uh, we cite these people or issue notices of violation based on what's on the internet. They change the internet, the issue is resolved, unless we can then go out and actually prove that they're continuing to use it for short-term rental. So, uh, uh, this is another one of those things where it's, you know, it's up to the council whether or not we conduct a study or not. Uh, we'd certainly be willing to put together some maps, you know, and, and some support documentation, you know, for why this area is, might need to be considered, why this area shouldn't be considered, and then, uh, let the planning commission conduct a public hearing.
See, the problem here with the water is, you're talking about Kensington, you're talking about Ben Oaks. And people are gonna be happy you put them in a short-term rental. There's a lot of places in the city of Biloxi you can have these. And people don't want them in their neighborhoods, but they have, there are places on Highland Avenue you could do this stuff, don't affect anybody.
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a lot of options. Water is, to me, is creating a problem.
George, with all due respect, we're just asking for a study. They'll, they'll present it, and then, then we can argue it.
I'm just saying.
At that point.
I'm just, I'm just telling you. Now, that, no case to case, then don't have any rules. If you have case to case. You have to have rules to do anything.
And we've, uh, you know, we, we've talked about this before. There, there are, uh, there are areas of the city that certainly it would not be appropriate. I mean, uh, Kensington, you know, uh, I, I would consider that, because that's kind of an enclosed neighborhood there. And you've got an entrance going in, an entrance coming out, and certainly, there's an expectation of sanctuary in an area like that. But you've also got some areas along the beachfront where the roads are essentially cut-through roads. I live on one of them. And, and in the area I live in, uh, there is no expectation of sanctuary. I mean, we have school buses through there all the time. It's just a cut-through road between Irish Hill and, and Beach Boulevard, and there's traffic all the time. And, and I know that, I understand that, and I choose to, choose to live there, uh, with that understanding. But, uh, we've, we've got some people that have invested in properties, and, uh, I'm not defending them for not doing their research, uh, but it is a question that needs to be answered. Maybe this gives a chance to answer it once and for all, so.
Yeah, and I just wanna, uh, uh, close this matter with a couple of comments. I think you and I talked, um, extensively over an overlay district, because we don't have an exa, exact parameters where we're gonna put it. And I think the overlay district would kind of give us a, 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 kind of define where we need to put these, where we can accept this or not accept it. And right now, you know, you, we have a lot of people that are in that gray area, that we know or we kind of don't know. I do kind of like the, uh, other thing you talked about, maybe a conditional use for certain people in certain areas.
Yes, sir.
But of course, it goes before the planning commission and the council before we, uh, do it. So, the study is something that's been needed for a long time, so we can go ahead and put a close to that chapter. Because we, you know, as long as I've been on the council, we've been battling that and trying to get it right. And, and of course, we need to get our due also, uh, as the city of Biloxi. Any other questions on this? Okay, all in favor of the study? Is everybody unanimous?
I have a problem with the study. The answer gonna be the problem.
Okay, I need a motion to recess this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dr. Tisdale, second by Ms. Newman. Any opposition? All in favor?